We're going to go ahead and get started with the City Commission Workshop, Monday, May 13th. If I can please have the City Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
President.
Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Harriet. Commissioner McCool.
Here.
Commissioner Shimkus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee. Mayor Villa.
Present. Going to go ahead and get started with 4A, which is business discussion regarding the special assessments for stormwater. Oh, I am so sorry, folks. I apologize. If Commissioner Villa Vasquez can lead us in the pledge, I apologize.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to get started with Section 4A, discussion regarding the special assessment for stormwater and solid wastes.
Mayor, I would like to introduce Bill Redman from Redman Group for the solid waste or the garbage pickup. And then after him, we'll have Brian Matts talking about the stormwater assessment.
There you go. We'll try this again. Good morning, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is Bill Redman with Redman Consulting Group, the city's solid waste consultant. As annually, what we do is we process the contractual agreements of requests for fuel adjustment and the collection cost to the solid waste provider, Waste Row. This is my contract. If you'll look. Okay, how do we get it up here? We'll go back to the first page.
It's not showing up there.
He's got it up on, there you go. As per the contract, the collection component is adjusted annually based on the annual CPI of the trash sewer, sewer waste and water component. That's the CPI government series. And the annual assessment is based on April to April for the following year to this year. The April tables are not out yet. We keep checking every day. So, we used March to get a benchmark to see where we most likely will be. The, that, we should have that by the end of the week. We don't anticipate much of a change from what we have already. If it is, it'll be a minor change up or down. The increase is 100% of the CPI index and the, the contract for the fuel adjustment is the average from April to April. And that, those tables are available and we have that calculated currently. The fuel adjustment calculation this year with the average from April to April last year to this year will be a reduction of 17.78% in the fuel component. Keep in mind, the fuel component is just one portion of the overall component that we calculate. The water sewer trash index, as you can see, we use the 5.3, which is the March 24 CPI index. As we said, as I said earlier, we don't anticipate that changing much, up or down percentage point or a percentage point or so. It'd be 5.3 or 5.5. It won't make much of a change if all, if there's any change at all in the overall component. The next slide you'll see is where we have calculated all of the increases and decreases. The, you start out with the residential solid waste. The current rate is $9.41. We increased that by 5.3%. And we made the fuel reduction from $1.98 to $1.40. Give us an overall component rate there of 11.58. That's for solid waste. Yard waste is $2.55. And the overall rate is $14.10. If you go to the left side, you'll see where we add all the components together with your city components, internal city components. This is the 1410. The landfill calculations is based on the last 12 months of the weight per house on the landfill tickets. This comes out of, based on solid waste and on yard waste. So, the landfill went up last October 11%. That's the county landfill price. They had not raised their prices in about 15 or 16 years. And when they did raise them, they raised it 11%. So, our solid waste calculation is $4.45 a house per month for all the garbage and yard waste and bulk. And the property appraiser adjustment is for putting it on the tax rolls is 11 cents per house. And the administrative general fund is 17 cents. And that makes it the overall, then we add it in, if the, go down the next line or further down, there's a 4.1% reserve. Makes your total price 255.70, or 235.70, sorry. That is the recommended solid waste assessment for this coming year, for fiscal year '24, '25. There's nothing we can do about the contractual agreements for the contractor. There's nothing we can do about the landfill. There's nothing we can do about the property appraiser. And the internal general, general fund and the reserve, that's a very, very slim reserve, by the way. Most reserves are 10 to 12, 14%. We've put in a 4.3, I think it is, I guess it, 4.3% reserve. If you look at the next, the annual cost goes from 20280 to 235.70. It's a $32.70 increase annually. So, that'd be $2 and change a month. That's for 104 pickups. It's $2.27 per pickup, what the recommendation is. That's $2.27 a month per house. That's for the collection and disposal and the tax rolls. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them if possible.
Commissioner McCool.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Redman. Appreciate this. Thank you for the meeting that we had. I appreciate that information also. And I want to be clear on a couple of matters here. The county has gone up on their landfill cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I want to understand here, what is there, the, as you've been doing this for a while, what is their landfill cost?
$37 a ton for garbage.
Mm-hmm.
And $30 a ton for yard waste.
Yep.
Now, what we've done previously, several years ago, we included bulk in with the regular garbage. So, all bulk items like beds and mattresses and so forth goes in with the garbage at $37 a ton.
Okay. And in talking with some people, we talked about reducing, reusing, recycling. And I want to understand what is it that we can and can't do to reduce our cost? I understand what this is. We talked at length about this, right? But what is it that we can encourage for our residents as far as helping alleviate some of the cost? Is it that we're more careful about the garbage we process? Is it the cleanouts that we have? And want to understand what the footprint of our garbage is so that we can understand how to reduce costs in the future. I understand that we're not, you know, doing anything we talked about. If this contract goes out to bid, what the financial ramifications of that are also. So, I'm going to talk about that in the future coming up. I'm not putting you on the spot now, but I'm telling you what we would like to do for our community to understand as we go along, what we can better do for that. And second of all, I want clarification on the recycling program.
Sure.
We have a lot of residents that are upset that we do not offer a recycling program. And I keep hearing mixed messages regarding, oh, this municipality recycles or this one doesn't. And I know that you can probably only speak to Fallujah County, but I really want that clarified here because we have a lot of residents that want to recycle also. So, could you put some, provide some input for that, sir?
Let me address the first thing. What can you do to reduce your cost? Right now, I would say there's not much you can do because the weight per house, on the normal weight per house is 38 to 42 pounds. You're 48.9 pounds per house.
Can you repeat that? Because I want us to hear that as a community, please.
Okay. The normal weight in most contracts is 38 to 42 pounds per house per week. You're 48.2%, or 38.6% pounds per house. So, you're 14, 16% higher in weight in your garbage. Yard waste, you're pretty well within range. So, there's not a whole lot you can do there because you're talking about 12, 14 pounds per house per week for yard waste.
Okay. So, if we work on a plan, or if we are cognizant of that and reducing our solid waste pounds, right, by either recycling by some means, understanding what we can do, composting, vegetation, the stuff that we usually throw in the garbage, I'm trying to understand the financial benefit of us being better about what we throw away. So, can you speak to that in terms of what percentage it might move down if we do that? I said might because we don't have a solid plan, but I want the community to understand how we can contribute to a lower solid waste fee. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, the, let's, let's take the recycle issue because that would move some waste over to the recycling. But I think in our meetings that we've had, I've indicated to you all of commissioners on individual meetings to give them, bring them up to speed on the solid waste issues, to implement, when we initially did this contract, we asked for two, two prices, one without commercial and one with commercial. Once the commission back then awarded the contract with, with going under the state statutes for three years to get exclusive commercial three years out, we also asked, what if we, what does it cost us to recycle? Waste Row came back with a price that reduced the cost, I think, March, it was $2.80 or something like that. It went from $12 to $10 back then, or $9 or something to eliminate recycling. We thought the phones were going to ring off the hook. We've gotten maybe two dozen calls.
Mr. Redman, give me a minute. Guys, can you please keep, Mr. Red, can you please keep your voice down a little bit? Thank you.
But since then, and we did a presentation to the League of Cities several years ago here in, in Deltona, of what was going on with the recycling market. The recycling market has not changed that much as far as the availability of commodities to be made. In my conversations with several CEOs of the large companies, they have said that the, about 65% of what is collected for recycling actually winds up in the landfill because of contamination issues. When we went to co-mingled recycling, the contamination issue went way up.
Yep.
And then what happens there is that it's rejected and sent over to the garbage. Now, they have, and back then, we didn't have a processing fee for recycling. It was $2.85 or $2.95 a home, no recycling, no processing fee. The companies now have a processing fee. Keep in mind, you asked me what the solid waste landfill fee was. That's $37 a ton. Processing fee for recycling currently is $77.50 going to $150, going to $150 this year. And when I did those calculations, it would add $5.35, I believe it is, to the current prices that we just gave you, per house per month, to, to go back to recycling. And you would possibly take 35% of that 48 pounds, or the excess weight that would go to recycling, that you would now pay $150 a ton for, for processing as opposed to $37 for disposal. So, what, what I'm getting at with you is to reduce your cost, I don't see a way out for you to reduce the cost because you have one of the lowest rates in the county. Now, the recent bids that have come in is triple what you pay. That's Palm Coast and Flagler County. That's $32, $33 a month, just for the collection and, collection and disposal. Down south, we're seeing $60, $70, $80 a month. So, unfortunately, Commissioner, I think you have a pretty good grasp on what you're doing now. You have probably one of the best services you've ever had because I've been doing this a long time. And I remember when Deltona had to pay a contractor to get rid of them several years ago. So, I don't see a way for you to reduce your existing costs and your proposed costs because it's already very, very low comparatively speaking.
And that all has been very succinctly stated and which I wanted to break it down further by saying this. In order for us to become a more ecological, responsible city, it's going to cost us a lot more than what we're paying now. And we're going to also have to spend a heavy human investment, meaning human capital, on education as far as how you recycle properly because a lot of this recycling is, it's about more than just throwing stuff into a bin, you know? And so, moving forward, sir, I understand very thoroughly, we had an hour-long meeting regarding this, in which a lot of these questions were asked and I wanted the, the, my constituency to understand where we went with these conversations and why I vote on things the way that I do. But I would like to, sir, in this next coming year, with the partnership of waste management, to make us better stewards of this, whether that be we find someplace that we, you know, can recycle for responsible recyclers, right, to reduce overall and with a goal of lowering our solid waste, our trash that we put out. Because I can't imagine us, if we don't, if we went to, I mean, we're at 48 pounds of garbage a week we get rid of. And I don't see that if we could cut that into, you know, cut a quarter off of that, that it would still be good for us and overall in cost for the coming years, right, by the time we get to our next contract. So, I was trying to get you to explain that so that we could put that out to our community. If we want to be ecologically sensitive, we have to start here with reducing the amount of garbage that we're processing. So, I just wanted to put that out there, sir.
Commissioner, I think in 1980, I think it was 1988, the state set a goal for 75% recycling by 2000 and, 2020. But 2020's come and gone. And we're nowhere close to that. And they have spent millions and millions and millions of dollars on education. It hasn't worked. Trying to get the public educated to, here's what you, you need to do and here's what you have to do. And it's just, it has not sunk in. People aren't going to, they keep putting pizza boxes in recycling. Pizza boxes are not recyclable because of all the grease and so forth. So, and that contaminates part of the other portions of the, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a battle.
We're basically paying for our unwillingness to learn and comply.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Redman. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Shimkus?
Thank you. All right, thanks. I got a few things. I'm not really sure who all is going to be responsible for each of these. Let me just start with the proposed reserve. We all may know last year, we had a million or so dollar shortfall that we had to cover out of the general fund. And I'm assuming that we had no reserve because that was, I think, previously built on recycling, which, you know, long story. So, my question and the reserve part of it is about $10 of the $30 for the year increase, right? So, we're asking residents to pay an additional $30 per year for this. $10 of that, or give or take, is for the reserve of only 4.3%, which roughly comes out to around $360,000. The question is, what is the reserve for? Because $360,000 would not cover any shortfall that we could possibly have, you know, now. So, I'm wondering if that's not for shortfall, if that reserve is for something else, like maybe, you know, storm and emergency stuff? I just want to understand what the reserve is for, since I guess we don't have one currently. And, you know, where we're at with, with that being potential wiggle room if we had to do something different in the overall cost.
I think your city manager would have to speak to that. But what we understand, what the reserves are for is like for emergencies, like storms, hurricanes and so forth, where you reach into that, where you have a fire, where you have other issues. And for a $9.73 reserve, it's $120 a year, roughly. Or, that's $9 a year. So, you've got 35,728 homes. So, 35,000 be $350,000. One day, in a storm collection, would wipe that out with, with all of the hauling and so forth and the monitoring and so forth of any FEMA actions. When you have a storm and you have FEMA overseeing it, you're going for FEMA funds. The collection company and the monitoring company expects to be paid now. So, you have to pay them now. And then you have to go to FEMA. And I know one city just settled the 2017 storms. That's seven years it took them to get their money. So, but, Mr. Wood, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, it's, it equals to 81 cents a month. It's $9.72 a year. And what it is, is for shortfalls, if, if we happen to have to pay more for disposal or tipping fees at the landfill. Also, if we have storms, some of the storm, a lot of the big bulk storm stuff will be picked up by our debris hauler at that time. But there's other times after they're gone that we still have stuff we need to, to get picked up. So, these reserves would cover part of that. And to make sure we still had money in that fund in the, in the solid waste or garbage fund. I know a lot of people have gotten confused last year over solid, between solid waste, and they were thinking it was pumping out septic tanks and all these kinds of things. But it's trash pickup. So, yes, the 81 cents a month per household are 80, yeah, 81 cents a month per household, which is 972, would be for those, for those type of events. And because of these are...
If I might, I'm sorry, Commissioner, let me add to that also. Under the current contract with us, with our current solid waste provider, if they, if we call on them to pick up some of the storm debris, their contract basically says what they do is they, and we, we keep these calculations monthly also in our office, of the annual or percentage of normal collection of yard waste, if it's 15 pounds per house, let's say. And they start, and we want them to go pick up some of this additional stuff and it comes out 30 pounds per house, we have to pay them for that additional 15 pounds. And it could be per house, it could be per every other house or whatever. So, those are what reserves are set aside for.
Okay. So, those instances where we have to pay for extra weight because of storms, that's when we do not get a separate hauler to come and do special storm debris. And that storm debris gets put into the regular trash. If, when we have a storm come through and we're told, hey, put all your stuff from the storm on the road at this time and this day, because we have special haulers that come through that, which is a much lower rate. So, I think that may be a little bit confusing that if we don't get those haulers or they don't pick it up, or people put their storm stuff into the regular trash, that does end up costing us a lot of money extra. And that can be part of that. So, that's maybe a different educational conversation for people to understand when to put things out to where. But back to the FEMA piece of it. But back to the FEMA piece of it, do you happen to know offhand, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot because I don't, wasn't prepared for, but do you happen to know how many FEMA requests for reimbursement we have not been paid for in the last 10 years? Are we still waiting for ones from any, any number of years ago or are we current?
I'll let Julie answer. Do you have that or do you want me?
I don't have the exact number, but we are still working with, for Hurricane Ian and Nicole. So anything prior to that has been paid.
Okay, so it was what, three years ago? Am I right?
Three years ago.
Something like that? Okay. So we're within three years of getting reimbursed from FEMA, which we all know takes forever. Do you know if we get a percentage of, or how much of a percentage of what we request we get? Is it always 100% or?
No, it's not always 100%. But it varies. I can give you more details tomorrow.
Okay, no, that's fine for now, thanks. Okay, so in general, the reserves are going to be mostly for storm pickup and if we have, you know, another under run perhaps. But again, with $360,000, if we had a million dollar under run last year, that's nowhere near enough. So I'm not sure, you know, what long-term we're looking at. Is this a fund that we anticipate growing over years, which I would like to see that same kind of chart you provided for the stormwater stuff that tells us, you know, projected fund balance of this emergency fund over the next five years when we get to that. But I wasn't ready for that tonight, which is fine. So the next thing I was going to ask about is, I guess, in general with what you're tracking, you know, as you are the consultant that tracks issues with our, with our collection, can you give us an idea of how many issues you are getting reported on each month and what kind of issues are we getting? I'm mostly concerned with how many reports each month do we get for damage to our roadways versus didn't pick up my house or other kind of categories of reports?
Well, most of, the tracking system that we use is on the city's website. So a resident can complain or we have our people with boots on the ground here three or four days a week and they've got a lot of experience in the solid waste. But this one of them is a retired code enforcement officer of 18 years here in the city. But the biggest complaint that we have is the toders or the containers being placed improperly after collection. The missed garbage is maybe 10% of all of it. The missed handicap is, it varies, very seldom do they miss a handicap. When they do, it's, it's a, it's a fine on them. We usually go through about 1,000 cases a month that we review. Once we go through that review, we then put together, based on the contract, administrative charges within the contract, we put together a report that's on a spreadsheet and a written report that goes to the city manager, the finance director, the head of code enforcement, the waste management, their waste pros management, their district manager, their regional VP and a girl by the name of Jeannie Amarau who handles all of this. They have an opportunity to take each one of those cases and respond back with their responses. We then go through those again, one by one, and either agree or disagree with their responses based on the report of the tracking system. And we finalize that. We send that final out to the city manager, the finance director and waste pros management and the head of code enforcement, Danny Ron and Brett Messer. So I think that answers your question.
And have you quantified the, have you quantified what you've been able to recover for the city in terms of fines in a given year per month?
Julia sent that to me the other day. We, it's averaging out over the period of the contract, about $1,700 a month. So in reality, about four cents per house.
Okay.
Now, some months it's higher, some months it's lower. I always said that overseeing these contracts is sort of like raising children or herding cats. I don't know which is tougher.
And then with regards to bulk cleanouts, we hear a lot about bulk cleanouts. And I'm wondering if you have any metrics that help us understand how many houses throughout Deltona are putting out what you would call an inordinate now, whether it's a rental that's being completely cleaned out or a house sale that's being cleaned out or any kind of a cleanup that's substantially more than what you would call normal? Do we have any metrics about how many houses per route, per month, per anything?
That's actually, Commissioner, under a separate contract. Once the code enforcement identifies that, they then have a, they issue a PO for like a foreclosure or something like that. It's just everything's moved to the curb or an eviction and that's under a separate contract and we don't track that.
So you're saying that the trash people will get to a house that has a lot of stuff out there and they will make a determination at that time whether they would consider it requiring a separate contract or requiring a separate PO or whatever?
No, if it's, if it's a move out, it's a tremendous amount of stuff, like somebody gets evicted or whatever and they just move all their stuff to the curb. If it's what we consider normal bulk dresser, dishwasher, three or four items, bed and matches and so forth, it requires something other than a rear load crew to pick it up. They bring in a cherry picker and pick that up. And those are, it's just, it's no extra charge. It's, it's what we call a cherry picker file.
What I'm trying to get to is when that happens, that person in the household has not called in anything, they just up and left and whatever, there's stuff out there. Who is responsible for telling code enforcement that there is a cleanout needed that's going to be separately charged from their general weekly pickup?
That's, that's code enforcement. Your code enforcement officers see that. Now, if our people see it, they report it right to your code enforcement, Danny Ron, head of code enforcement, and put it in the tracking system as a code enforcement notification.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Yes?
If I may. That sunk falls under the abatements. If we have a move out like that, code enforcement goes and tags the door, gives them so many days, and then they do an abatement, which is charged back to the house or, you know, a possible lien put on the house. So that's, that's kind of what that is.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to get to like, at what point do the, do the trash collection people decide that's, that needs to be an abatement? That's not me picking this up this week? And I think I got that sense now. So thanks. And then the last thing I was going to ask, just to kind of clarify again, you know, the $30 per year increase, the only scalable cost that we have any direct control over or any direct impact with would be the landfill costs that we pay directly to Lusia County. Does not go through Waste Pro. We pay landfill directly to Lusia County because you bring the tickets in and we pay that as a bill. So to Mr. Commissioner McCool's point, the only variable that we have to work with as a city is to help people understand the less trash you put out for a collection, the less charges the city will have. And if we see a reduction, if we, stars all align and we are able to get people to understand, hey, if you put out less, you take things to Goodwill, you do reusing, you do whatever it is you need to do, to let's put less stuff out. At what stage in next year, if we say, hey, we saw a decrease in our, our, you know, average pound per house per week, that we can then say, we can revisit this again and say, okay, now we can adjust the cost again? Is that the only cost that we have any actual control over or do I misunderstand that?
Well, I believe the answer that'd be next time, once, this time next year because you're on the ad valorem tax, so it goes on to tax rolls. And like I say, we track that constantly. Every month, we, we track it by the pounds per house, by commodities, garbage or yard, or yard waste. And that's how it's calculated by those two separate items. And once you put it on the tax rolls, it's there until you do it again next year. If there is a reduction, just like there's a reduction in fuel this year. If we, we have a reduction in the landfill fees, landfill costs for residential unit, that'll get reported to you this time next year.
Okay. So I would just ask then, if we can just, for visibility to the public, if those numbers that you're reporting on each month can be placed somewhere on a public website in some kind of a dashboard system, I would love, I would be the happiest person in the world if I ever saw an actual visual dashboard on our city website of any data. This would be a great place to start, if we can just help people understand, we have a goal, you are putting out 48 pounds a week. If we can get the average down to 42, make it a, you know, a thing in the city to see if we can get to a lower number. I think that would just be a nice way of engaging the public in some data that they could be useful with. So, and that's all I had. Thank you.
What you don't want is for somebody to start throwing it in the woods and on the side of the road. What you want to do is put it at the curb so we, so we make sure it's collected and it doesn't become a code issue somewhere else. So, but the government, the fuel is off a government website, the diesel fuel, and the CPI is, is a government website.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the commissioner mentioned handicap. Where do they normally fill out the applications to notify Waste Pro that they're handicapped and they need their garbage picked up right by their door and brought back up?
Yeah, it's, it requires, I believe it's a form at the city where the doctors sign off on it, that you're handicapped, that you can't get it to the curb or there's nobody in the house that's young enough or able enough to get it to the curb. And then there goes on a special list for the contractor and the city that this is a handicap collection and it's picked up at the door.
And your drivers have this list with them?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Your drivers have a list with them?
Yes, ma'am. And if they have a new driver and he doesn't, and he misses it or whatever, they hear about it real quick.
Because you get a fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, I know as Commissioner McCool mentioned before, a lot has come up regarding recycling. Where, if the cities that are having recycling right now, where is their recycle being taken?
The closest collection point or processing point is one is in Ocala and one is in Brevard County. So it has to be trucked to those locations. And being in the trucking business, you know, we all understand what the cost is now for those vehicles, just like I was telling one of the, I think the city manager the other day. The collection, when I bought my, when I was in the business, I bought my first truck, I paid $125,000 for it. That same truck now is $400,000. And they're going to go up again this year because of the EPA standards on the engines and it's going to go up about another $45,000 or $50,000. The front load trucks that service the commercial, those are now over $450,000.
And of course, we all know that not everything that's picked up for recycle goes into the recycle areas.
Yeah, the, the, as I stated, we have asked some of the recyclers, tell us what, where you're packaging this and sending it out to what, to what commodity? Are they making widgets out of this? What are they doing? I get no response.
So if they pick up 20 bundles, 30 might go into the recycle or maybe less?
Yeah.
I've heard of people have this private account with some recycling company that they come to their house and picks up their stuff and what do you say about that? Those private companies that are doing this?
First of all, you have bore trucks running on your street. Second of all, correct me if I'm wrong, Marsha, Waste Pro has the exclusive right to all solid waste, yard waste and recycling at this point. Now, can that be negotiated out? There would be a cost to it, you know, and then as far as a private company coming in, who's going to monitor them and who's going to follow them, know who they are?
And that cost is separate from the regular charges that we spoke about right now?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to bill the resident direct. And on, on that basis, also, you know, it's our residents, we want to make sure that they're serviced properly. How do we, how do we monitor that?
So you have no control over that because it's a separate private company that they're using on their own?
No, I don't, I don't know of any cities that are using private company except for, I believe, Southard out of New Smyrna is servicing Edgewater. They had a lot--
Well, I didn't hear companies, I heard individuals, individuals having some kind of service come pick up at their homes and they pay a separate fee for that. Do you know--
If they're going to come into our city, they've got to have all the proper insurance, they've got to have all the proper bonding, they have to have all the proper communications. We have to know who they are, where they are and when they are.
Okay. Do you know if any other country has opened up for recycling pickup or acceptance from the United States?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
None? Okay. Especially the pizza boxes, right? Because they found the little pieces of cheese in the corner.
Put your pizza boxes in the recycling.
Yes. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome, ma'am.
Mr. Redmond, before we go to Commissioner McCool, I have a couple of questions. I had a meeting, I believe, last week with Waste Pro. And one of the conversations that we talked about was if we're going to be increasing again, if we're going to be increasing the price with no change in services, I'd like to at least provide my residents the opportunity of them being able to see what it would look like with some type of recycling attached to it. Now, I understand that we talked about, you know, how the recycling is actually working right now, which is a conversation I have with Waste Pro. They, they actually are recycling, at least that's what was portrayed to me. And they talked about two, two good possibilities that, or one of them more than anything, that would help with a more of a cheaper type of recycling, which would be like a drop-off station where residents can go and drop off their, their recycling. I just want to be able to provide my, again, my residents the opportunity of seeing, okay, if we do decide to go down the route of recycling, because that's a big topic, right? Here's how much more it'll cost if we have at least a drop-off station for them to drop off their recyclables, right? Which can also be used as a moment of opportunity to educate them of what is and is not recyclable as well. Do you see that being an issue with us being presented with some type of a, some type of a price on how much that would cost?
Nassau County does drop-off station, has a drop-off location. The biggest problem they've got is somebody has to be there to monitor it 24/7 to keep or at least lock it up when, after hours so they don't throw people coming, throw all kinds of stuff in there. There are lawn mowers with gasoline in the engine and so forth. And you have to have several different containers. So it would have to be a location where you could fence it off and have somebody there monitoring it, whether it be from Waste Pro or a city employee, to ensure that, that stuff was disposed of properly. I don't know what that cost would be, but it, normally it's roll-offs, 20-yard roll-offs. And then they take those roll-offs and by commodity and haul them to a transfer station where they dump it on the floor. And the floor, once they put that on the floor, they push it into a 100-yard walking floor trailer and take it to either Ocala or to Brevard County. As I stated earlier, the CEOs that I have met with from some of the larger companies, including Waste Pro founder and CEO, their processing fee is going to go from $77.50 a ton to $150 a ton. So I don't know how you would charge the resident or would you charge the resident as they brought stuff there? And how would you charge them by commodity or by weight or whatever? Somebody, there'll be a cost to it, Mayor, but, you know, you've got to figure out how you're going to cover that cost. And I think, I think it's worth talking to Waste Pro about and see what they, what they say, if they come up with a cost. And I'll be more than happy to do that for you.
One of the other questions I had, and I'm glad you addressed the containers being misplaced, because two, so I get three complaints usually when it comes to trash. It's they left the trash in the middle of the driveway, which for me, I just get out of the car, move it. But not, not everybody has the same ability of doing that, right? it. But not everybody has the same ability of doing that, right? It's, they missed taking the trash. And then the third one, which I did not hear any mention of it yet, is the oil spills. There's particular two residents that continuously send emails that some of their trucks are leaking hydraulic fluids and what have you. And as a matter of fact, this past week, we had one, I believe in District 2, that keeps having the same issue. I know that we find them or we catch it, but it's kind of, I'll get an email saying, well, it wasn't us. It seems like it's somebody else. And it's kind of hard to kind of believe that when it's happening usually around the same time that trash pickup is being done. And to allude to the same, some of the same residents say, well, Mayor, we have no other big trucks that come by here. I mean, is that something that we're also addressing with them? Again, I know they're getting fined and things like that, but I need to make sure that we're addressing that as well.
When our field inspectors see any type of a leak on our truck, it could be a hydraulic leak, it could be a leach aid leak. The trucks are supposed to be watertight for 18 inches up from the bed. We rode a truck up the other day that was leaking what we call leach aid, that's garbage juice, out the back door through the seal, brand-new seal. And one of my field inspectors called me and said, what do I do? I says, you ride them up. It's a finable offense. Well, it's a brand-new seal. Every time they dump that truck, they're supposed to wipe that seal down. And his statement to our guy was, well, they only pressure wash them once a week. That's not my problem. It becomes our problem, the city, when they don't clean the seal and wipe it down like they do, because it's right there. All you got to do is wipe it down. And I know the address that you're talking about, 433, I forget the name of the street, but between code enforcement, Waste Pro, and RCG, we have determined that it was most likely not Waste Pro that leaked in front of this gentleman's house, even though Waste Pro has spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars going out there trying to clean it up. And I think I mentioned it to the city manager the other day, that probably the only fix for that is to cut that out and resurface it. And probably it won't satisfy them because it'll be a different color than the rest of the road. But, you know, there's just no way to get it, nothing's cleaned it up. The professionals have tried. But we do, we do take that very seriously. We write them up. When they get written up, they're supposed to do a pre-trip or a post-trip sheet when they turn it in. And we've had them say to us, well, we've turned it in several times and they haven't repaired it in the evening. Well, when we write it up, they repair it. But we do take those very seriously because when you can see where the garbage truck has been, then that's not a good thing. That's your streets.
And, now, look, I get it, you know, mistakes happen. But to residents' points, right? They want their community to look nice. And there's been multiple people out there trying to clean it. And like you said, they've been unable to clean it. And that's what we're trying to avoid, is those type of situations where we have some type of, like whatever you called it, what is it, garbage juice or hydraulic leaks, whatever it is. We don't want those stains, excuse me, not only in that part of the city, but anywhere. So that's my concern, is are we making sure that they're being tracked and we're rectifying that issue? It's none of my business how many times they clean their trucks or not. You're right. That's their responsibility. What is my business is how they leave our roads after they're done. So if you guys are already monitoring that, thank you.
We stay on it constantly. That's one of the things that when we inspect the trucks, you know, my guys have got 30 years of experience in doing this, they check those trucks up and down. And if there's a hydraulic leak, small or large, it's written up.
Commissioner McColl?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly speak. When we ended recycling prior to, there was a private company that came a few years ago. They did a presentation. I enlisted the services of that private recycling company. I think that they were in business for about a year, and then they left Deltona, they said, due to lack of response for customers here in Deltona. So that's just my own personal experience with that. But I do agree, you can educate all day long, but until you have willing participants to really go that extra mile to do that, we're at a loss, you know, for that particular situation. So continue to educate is my thing. And I am so on board with what Commissioner Shimka said regarding, you know, it has to be a community thing, whereas we try to bring that percentage down. I mean, that's, you know, 13%, 14% more than your average bear in what we put out in garbage, you know? And if we can just do better with that. I mean, even a compost pile in the backyard, putting your vegetation, because you know you shouldn't put it down the garbage disposal, right? But taking that vegetation and, I don't know, maybe donating it to community gardens, starting a compost pile in your own backyard is going to lower that also. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Do we have any public comments specifically on the trash before we go into the stormwater?
Mayor? Can I say a couple of comments?
Sure.
If you don't mind?
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of things to note. The solid waste or the garbage fee has not been increased since 2018. The increase this year, current year, we're $202.80 per year. The proposed residential yearly is $235.70, which is a $32.90 increase per year, not per month, per year. And then, so that's $2.74 per month increase. The garbage provides weekly residential pickup and yard waste pickup, so it's twice a week. They do the garbage once a week and then the yard pickup, or the yard waste once a week. So that's 104 services a year. So it equals about $2.27 per trip for the residential garbage pickup and disposal, which, I just wanted to give you all that little bit of information. I'm sure you already knew, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That $2.27 is for garbage and yard waste and bulk.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Edman.
Mayor?
No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Edman. We're going to go ahead and go into stormwater presentation, please.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Brian Mance. He's with GovRates. They have met with us a few times over the last couple of months. And he has an extensive presentation for you tonight on the stormwater rates. Thank you.
I think it was all the presentation that you just had up.
Oh, was it?
We can do it here. There you go.
Well, good evening, Commissioners and also members of public. My name is Brian Mance from GovRates, and I'm here to present the results of the stormwater rate study. So it's important to recognize, what do the city's stormwater rates pay for? Well, the stormwater utility has several areas of responsibility. Construction of new or replacement stormwater handling infrastructure, cleaning of the underground stormwater drainage system, maintenance of roadside surface, of the roadside surface drainage network, the removal of obstructive vegetation from ditches or swales, mowing and litter control on Deltona's collector roads and 31 residential sectors, master planning to serve, to solve local flooding and water quality problems, and to provide pollution prevention solutions, and emergency stormwater services before, during, and after major storm events. So the city's stormwater rates are annual charges per equivalent residential unit to fund stormwater operations. And the existing charge or assessment of $128 per year per equivalent residential unit has remained unchanged since fiscal year 2019, or five years ago. It's not been rightsized since various factors and market volatility have caused substantial inflation in stormwater utility costs. It's insufficient to keep the stormwater system operationally and financially sustainable. It's currently accounted for, the stormwater operations are accounted for in a special revenue fund, and the current funding levels require transfers from the general fund to pay for stormwater operating and capital needs. So with respect to making projections, we've made projections through fiscal year 2029, which, and we look at the operations and maintenance expenses, debt, debt service, capital improvement program funding through rates, any kind of administrative transfers or reserve allowances. All of these components make up what we call revenue requirements that we need to fund through our stormwater rates. So let's talk about the issues. One is aging infrastructure. Stormwater infrastructure, just like a lot of utility infrastructure, is often out of sight, out of mind until there's an incident. Deltona is predominantly a swale or ditch form of stormwater conveyance, unlike new developments which provide curbing, catch basins, retention ponds, and other contemporary design standards. Hurricanes Ian and Nicole caused about 250 homes to be flooded, roadway closures, and an overwhelming unprecedented impact on the stormwater infrastructure. Deltona has infrastructure that in some areas is over 50 years old. The assets have reached or exceeded useful service lives. And here we see some pictures of the flooding impacts of hurricanes Ian and Nicole. And again, here's another picture, which shows obviously a road underwater. These are pictures of what a lot of your stormwater infrastructure looks like. And a key takeaway from this picture is that the need to replace this infrastructure proactively is not going to go away, but it's just going to continue to be more expensive to address. The city has begun the Teresa Basin Study, which will enhance the stormwater master plan and identify priority areas for stormwater improvements. But of course, we need funding for these improvements as well as for other projects identified in previous master plans. Obviously, with stormwater, I mean, the city has pursued and continues to pursue grants and other cost-free options to reduce amounts that must be funded through stormwater rates, including state appropriations, the FEMA mitigation program, the FDAP programs, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Community Development Block Grants, Transform 386. And to help expedite the grant validation and submit a process, the city has pre-qualified two firms with extensive expertise in grant procurement. So again, the city staff is always trying to secure stormwater grants. And, you know, the availability of stormwater grants, obviously, it depends on priority and also how economically disadvantaged a community is. So here's the capital program. We have, there's about $25.5 million of capital needs addressed here, primarily the Teresa Basin drainage improvements and pump station and a lot of vehicles and equipment that just need to be replaced. As far as the capital improvement program funding, about 76% of the funding is projected to come from bank loans and special assessment notes, with the remainder funded on a pay-as-you-go basis from rate revenues and operating reserves. And we've assumed three bank loans based on recommendations from PFM, the city's financial advisor, one in 2025, one in 2027, and one in 2029. Another issue is substantial cost increases. Since 2019, when the stormwater rates were last adjusted, stormwater operating expenses have increased 70% from $3 million to $5.1 million today. And operating expenses are projected to continue increasing. Florida inflation is now exceeding national trends. There have been substantial increases in the stormwater utility supply costs. There's been nationwide issues with filling positions and keeping employees. And there's a need, obviously, to perform more repairs and maintenance on the system. And it's important to recognize that, you know, these permanent increases in costs must ultimately be passed through to customers through rates. So some sample cost increases since the stormwater rates were last adjusted. One is the, here's the Northwest Drainage Improvement Project. The engineering estimated construction cost in 2019 was $775,000. The lowest bid for construction in 2022 was $1.8 million, 144% higher. Here we have the, and also another example, the Fort Smith Pump Station Improvements. The engineering estimated construction cost in 2020 was $275,000. The lowest bid for construction in 2024 was $641,000, 133% higher. Now, these increases in costs are not unique to Deltona. This is just something that's being experienced nationwide. Another issue is impact to the general fund. So there was a $2.5 million transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund in fiscal year 2024. The stormwater fund is basically depleted. Deferred maintenance is growing. And stormwater increases, cost increases are now paid from the general fund, which reduces the flexibility to the city to address other priorities. So revenues under existing rates are insufficient to address utility system needs. And we talked about what goes into the different, the operating expenses, debt service, things that are paid through rates. And here you can see that this red line represents the revenues under existing rates. And the bars represent the things that we need to recover through a rates. And obviously, if the rates were sufficient to meet all of our costs, the bar would intersect at the top of the, the line would intersect at the top of bars, but it's not. And so this is not a financially and operationally sustainable system. Financial risks of not adjusting stormwater rates, the stormwater system is basically unsustainable, and rates will be higher as capital needs are deferred. You know, you saw the pictures of the, you know, of the sample renewal and replacement needs. Those things will not go away, but they're just going to be more expensive to address in the future. And you can see from this chart that if we just didn't do any, if we just said, if we had this plan and didn't do any kind of rate adjustments, we would quickly run out of cash. So basically, we can't do, can't do anything. So what is the projected need for stormwater rate increases? Right now, we talked about the existing rate that's been effective since 2019, or for five years, $128 or an effective monthly rate of $10.67. For 2025, we're proposing $170, which is an effective monthly rate of $14.17, or an effective monthly increase of $3.50. Now, we don't, you know, one thing we do when, we proactively, you know, check for affordability. And the, less than 1% of median household income for stormwater systems is considered an affordability threshold by bond rating agencies. And you can see that throughout, for our entire plan, we're well below 1%. So by any utility industry standard, this would be considered an affordable plan. And assessments are adopted annually. Only the 2025 adjustment needs to be adopted at this time. So with the rate adjustments, you can see that the, you know, we were kind of looking at the dotted red line before, but you can see with the adjustments, you can see that we are intersecting at the top of bars and basically meeting our obligations and reducing the subsidization from the general fund. And there was some talk about cash reserves. We're not really where we want to be as far as cash reserves, but we're at least on a path to reestablish the depleted stormwater fund. And certainly, with the kind of volatility... And certainly with, with the kind of volatility in costs that, that the stormwater fund has been experiencing, it's important to have some cash reserves so that if, if you either you're, you're, have an unforeseen operating or capital cost, you're able to adjust accordingly. So how does, how does the, you know, some utilities bill monthly while others have an annual assessment. So as I mentioned, a lot of the stormwater issues, a lot of the cost increase issues, they're being experienced by utilities nationwide. It's nothing unique to Deltona. You can see that you're, you're under the proposed stormwater assessments, you're a little bit higher than DeBarry.
Excuse me, sir. If you can just keep speaking to the microphone, because some residents can hear.
Okay, all right. So as you can see, with the, with the, you know, with the proposed rates, you'd be a little higher than DeBarry, but obviously, there are other utilities, stormwater utilities that have a lot more, more, more challenges as higher rates. However, a storm, any kind of rate or bill comparison is not a report card on how well the utility is performing, because there are a lot of reasons why stormwater rates differ among utilities, such as the storm, the services provided through the stormwater fees. Not all stormwater utilities provide street sweeping, the amount of lake or canal area to be maintained, the level of capital improvements needed, the number, the amount of renewals and replacements, the, how much, how much, how much grant funding you can, you can get, or the time of the, of the last rate review. Just a lot of different reasons why the rates, stormwater rates are, differ among utilities. So our recommendation is to adopt the proposed 2025 annual charge of $170 per equivalent residential unit, which is an effective $14.17 per month, basically a $3, effective $3.50 per month increase. By any utility standard, it's considered affordable, competitive. It's necessary to provide enough revenue to secure financing for a portion of the capital program and eliminate subsidization from the general fund. It doesn't exceed the stormwater utilities' costs. And certainly, the 4% early payment discount is applicable with this assessment. And again, this is the first stormwater proposed rate adjustment since 2019, or five years ago. And as I mentioned, only the 2025 adjustment would need to be adopted at this, at this time. And certainly, the city staff will, you know, has a program in place to try and get some grant funding. And, you know, to the extent that you can get some grant funding, maybe some of the future rate adjustments can be reduced, or the city can do, can do even more to address your stormwater needs. And as I talked about, the Teresa Basin Study should be completed sometime, I guess this may be next year, and then you'll have a better, and then you'll be able to better address, you know, the priority, figure out the most, the highest priority stormwater needs. That's it.
Commissioner McCall.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this report. And I would also encourage residents to go online, and if you want to pull up the April 2nd, April 2nd Volusia County meeting, you can pull up their agenda item regarding their hike rate study also. I attended that meeting. It's a 514-page report, but it's about the things that we should be looking at in our city also. And I understand through my conversations with Glenn, with Phyllis, and over this last year, the needs for this. And, you know, I think that last year, one of the problems were, is that we weren't really great explaining this to the residents. They got a somewhat robotic message in the mail, and it was fearful for some people, thinking that, you know, what this rate hike was going to be. And what I want to say from this commissioner, things that we need to think about if we don't do this, how this affects our insurance coverage. It's something, it's a cost avoidance by going ahead and implementing. It is keeping us from taking money out of general fund. We have a five- and 10-year capital improvement plan that we're following with our budget. And when we have to take money out of the budget, what happens is, now you're also putting projects behind so that by the time it comes back to us, after spending that money out of the capital improvement projects, is that it's three times more than what it would have been if we'd have taken care of it to begin with. So this assessment takes us out from behind the eight ball. And also, I think that, I talked this morning at length with our state representative about this very thing, and how Deltona, over this next budgeting cycle, can put our program together to ask for more funding, because there is a great need here. Right now, the Teresa Basin Study is happening, which I think is going to paint two pictures, one in a very unfavorable light about what our needs are, but on the other hand, two, in a very favorable light, to get more funding from the state for these projects. As it stands right now, we've had limited funding. They've, between Senator Tom Wright and our state representative, have brought that money to this area, but we need more based on what I believe are going to be the results of this Teresa Basin Study. And I see our city manager shaking his head yes at us. And so I want us to think about that in prioritizing and helping the residents understand also as we do this, what our greatest need is. Is it the level of service? Is it the new infrastructure, operating expenses, you know, land for new storage? And I think that if we stick with these points and we educate our public and ourselves on that matter, this is really good in explaining where we're at, you know? And any, during the budget, I'm just bringing this up so that when we're doing our budgeting, we can understand what the ask is to reduce some city spending on things that we might be able to do an overall cost reduction. But at the same time, it's going to be, you know, give and take in these areas as far as getting our residents behind what this is going to do. So my ask when we are moving forward is to be very succinct and descriptive and informative, and keep the message pointing to our residents forward about what we're doing with this money, because we didn't say last year what projects we need to do. And I think that we do have that list of projects, and I think that they'll be forward-facing based on what comes back from the Teresa Basin Study also. So my residents asked about this. Again, one of the largest things I want us to think about is the insurance implications. If we do not do this so that we can start doing these stormwater projects that need to be done to keep our insurance costs, and not only that, we have to think about our Fitch rating also, because if we're neglecting to do projects, we're looked at and our Fitch rating can be affected also as a city, which affects any other financial decisions that we make as far as bonding, spending, saving, and reserves. So we need to think about that also. So I am a very staunch supporter of this assessment based on the information that I've been given, but I think that we need to do a really great job this year of explaining to the residents why and how and what we're doing. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for this report. It couldn't have been much simpler than what you explained it, and the recommendations for the increase is so, we have not seen something like this before. So hopefully, this will help us, you know, when it comes time to make the decision on the increase of the rates. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Shinkis, then I'll go, and then Commissioner McCall.
All right, thanks. You mentioned on one of the slides that the, the increases in engineering estimates were far out, you know, were wrong compared to the customers, the, sorry, compared to the actual construction estimate. So I saw a four- to five-year lag in all of those. And so I'm wondering if perhaps we need to be doing a better job of asking engineers to account for that, whether, if we're getting an engineering, you know, estimate in 2019, knowing that we're not going to start that till 2024, we need to be more aware and cognizant that we're asking for an estimate five years before we're going to do anything. And I don't know if engineers just aren't taking that into account like they maybe should be, if that's a request we can ask, that please include these potential increases that we're seeing, or if we need to do a better job of not getting an engineering report until we're imminently going to be doing this project, so we're not sitting on a estimate for five years that's no longer anywhere near the ballpark of what we're going to actually spend. So that's, I guess, just a general, can we please understand and look at where we're, how we can fix that so that we're planning better and not getting constantly surprised every time we go to get something, you know, constructed? And then I just want to tell everyone, I had a realization that, you know, I had a misconception, and I'm not sure if anyone else does or had this misconception. I was not aware, I guess fully, that these stormwater assessments were covering the entire operation, daily operation and maintenance and everything along stormwater. My brain was telling me that this stormwater assessment was only for an actual capital improvement project, adding a new drain field or adding, you know, some massive project to the city. So I just wanted to clear that up. You know, I learned something in the last couple of days, and just in case anyone else thought that those numbers were just for big projects, I learned that they are actually paying for the trucks and the, you know, for every little pump that we replace throughout the year. So there's a lot more going into this than I realized at the time, so bad on me for not knowing that before. And then I guess the only other question, and I, you know, I know certain residents have had this question, and one of them is here tonight as well, so I'll just ask it as well. Have we given into consideration to a different graduated scale that we would look at? For instance, instead of, instead of the massive increase, you know, not massive really, but, you know, instead of the big increase at the beginning, maybe we only go up $30 to $150 the first year to start graduating in? I'm just curious if we've done the projections to understand if that $170, you know, increase is the bare minimum to cover our underruns? And if that's not the bare minimum for that underrun, what would the first year's bare minimum increase be to just cover the deficit, and then we can start building out of that? Since we're, obviously, we're going to be doing, you know, increases, looking at these increases and crash increases, and, you know, who knows what else, you know, down the road? So just to kind of keep everything into a global look at what we can do to, you know, mitigate all of that together.
Well, as you can see, the, you know, the increase for...
I think your mic is off again, or can you, yeah, I'm sorry.
For, as you can see, the increase in 2025 is, is anticipated to, to, I mean, I mean, you would either, I think you would either have to make some cuts, or the general fund would need to make some more transfers to subsidize the stormwater fund.
Okay, so that $170 increase is the bare minimum to get us to operate kind of revenue-neutral, if you will?
And we believe in, I firmly believe in putting my best foot forward in front of the commission. And as a rate consultant, it never gives me any pleasure to, you know, to talk about rate increases, but I think, I think the $170 is a good number.
Mr. Wickham, here, I'm going to address this, obviously, you're the interim city manager right now. I think that the issue that most residents have, and I have, looking at this, obviously, I know we need it, right? We need to have some type of dashboard attached to this increase, because residents want to see what is being done with this money. I get we're getting projects done. It covers a lot of the stormwater things, the vehicles, but we need, residents, I say "we" as a whole, we need to be able to see where the money is going, why is it going? If residents have that, I don't know a single resident that has an issue with paying a little bit more, as long as they, as long as they know what's happening with those funds. And I'll give you a great example today with the main water break that happened. You know, one of the messages that I got was, Mayor, what's, you know, what are we getting for our money? Granted, it's not a whole lot, and I know this is different from that, but, you know, they had a very good point. We don't have nothing currently, and this is not your fault, by the way, we don't have anything in place that residents can go in and see, oh, the Fisher Plan. Well, we just got like $10 million, and as long as the governor doesn't veto it, you know, we're going to have to start working on improvement, just an example. Those are the little things that residents want to see. If we had something like a dashboard that we can use to literally visually show residents what is happening with this stormwater assessment fee, I would have no issue voting for it, because then I can go back and tell residents, you know what? This is going for this, this project is getting done, it's six months in, there's a year left on that project to be completed right now. I mean, we here on different things, I mean, Commissioner Vila Vasquez has issues getting projects done in her district all the time. And then, I'm not picking on you, just, this is an example. So if we can get some type of a dashboard attached to, hey, we're going to increase the stormwater assessment fee, but here's a dashboard that's going to show you guys what's happening to the money with timelines and things like that, I have no issue. Other than that, I mean, I'm going to have a really hard time supporting this, not because we don't need it, but because we as a city are not great at communicating these things to our residents.
Commissioner McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that is exactly why I asked for forward-facing information as we move through this process, because we have a deficit from last year. What was the supplement amount last year, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Lord Wickham? What was the supplement last year that we had to supplement this year from general fund?
I believe it was $2.5 million, but part of that was for the Lake Teresa Basin Study.
Yeah, so there you go. So I'm for that. And also, as far as, I hate using the word outdated, but I'm just going to say outdated infrastructure. And we can't really get a, I don't know if we can get a good grip on that as a public, because we have some portions of our city, I understand, that Homeland Security doesn't allow us to divulge. Is that not correct?
That's more for the water plants.
The water plants? Yeah, so, but I'm just saying, I agree with the mayor on that, and I know that we have our list of priority projects every year in the budget that we get, that says that we're doing this, or if it was done or not. So as we move through budget season, I am completely on board with that. Residents just want to know where it is, and I know that we have a grip on it internally, but facing that message outwardly would go a long way towards showing. I mean, we already at, I'm just going to say that by not doing it last year, we're basically at a 2.6, whatever that was, $2.6 million deficit from last year that we're going to try to capitalize on this year. And I believe that in my ask, in my sitting down about this also, that is the bare minimum that we can get by on, based on the fact that we neglected to do this last year when we sent the red flag up. So there you go with that. And I just wanted to make mention also that I had asked the county when I was at the meeting last time, during the middle of that study that they presented, that there are cities that they're going to start doing watershed portions of our unincorporated area studies on. And I, when they went down the list of everything, raised my hand at everything that they were, they were talking about. So I've asked that Deltona be prioritized because of our flooding issues last year, so that the county prioritize, that we can be a part of that, so we can start getting help, start getting the solid proof about how we can send this out for grant money and further funding, and so that we can do allocation this year for matching funds based on the projects that we want to have funded, you know, by those grants or money from the state. Because it looks a lot better when we have money in reserves for these very projects. When we go to the state and ask them for help this upcoming budget year in 2025, that we have, it would be great if we had a couple million dollars set aside, that we could tell the state when our state rep goes up there and our senator goes up there, that Deltona has been prudent, we have budgeted, we have planned, we have put aside money to match these funds that we will get from the state. The state likes hearing that, means we're managing our money, we're managing our priorities. And so that's one of my asks too, as we move through budgeting season, that we think about that so that we can get those funds. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Shinkis.
Yeah, I think, sir, just one quick additional clarification that I'd ask for is, because can someone help understand how the commercial industry pays into this? Because I'm not sure, the ERUs are those just residential households? How does that get applied to an apartment complex or a shopping center, or are they always only done through impact fees, or how that works for commercial?
Well, the stormwater rates are on, you know, what you call an equivalent residential unit, which is based on impervious area. So an impervious, the impervious area of a commercial establishment, so at a commercial establishment would typically have more, several ERUs. So they're, they would pay their proportionate share based on the number of equivalent residential units that they have, based on their impervious area, square footage.
Do you have any public comments?
Mayor, can I do one more question? I'm sorry. The last, I believe Brian brought it up, but the last rate increase went from 108 to 128. That was back in 2019. This year's proposed rate is 170, which is $40. This year's proposed rate is 170, which is $42 a year increase. And I'm sorry, I didn't calculate how much per month that is. $3.50 per month increase. So there are a couple of things that Commissioner Schimkus had brought up a while ago that I wanted to kind of tack on to. The city stormwater system consists of 800 miles of swells, 67 miles of pipe, 605 curb inlets, 3,105 stormwater basins, and 128 retention, detention ponds all across 45-plus square miles in the city of Deltona. The stormwater infrastructure is managed and maintained by a crew totaling 36 members. And one of the things I wanted to also emphasize that the stormwater rate increase is not tied to the water or sewer, it's different. You know, it's a, it's a totally separate thing. So as Commissioner Schimkus mentioned earlier, besides the capital projects, these other things go into it. You have to maintain it, you have to mow the swells, you have to mow the retention ponds, you have to clean canals, all those kind of things. So I just wanted to bring that up, to piggyback on him. Thank you.
Doug McDonald, please.
I wanted to thank this man here for a great presentation about this situation with our stormwater. I live here, I've been here since 1992. I can tell you where a new nickname in our city is going to be Flood City. Water is everywhere. So I don't agree with Commissioner McCool or Schimkus or whoever else said that we need to educate the people. There is no education needed. All we need to do is look around. It is everywhere. I'm fortunate, I'm high, so I'm not involved here. Just to give you a quick estimate, since I only have two minutes here, the city, I believe, is still engaged in litigation with Stone Island over water. Is that correct? Still going? We have the Alcam and Captain, Lake Helenolstein, Captain's Drive area flooded out completely. And I think the mayor was hopeful to get us a bridge through some of that area. Is that right? Thank you. We need every help we can get. My own area, I have a retention pond southwest of our home on Fort Smith Boulevard. It is at the brim. You can't have another ounce of water going in there. It will flood out Fort Smith Boulevard. So I'm not exaggerating in the least. And this page 18 right here, follow it. Double, triple our rates, whatever we need to do to stop this flooding. Thank you very much.
Catherine Gallagher, please.
Hi, Kathy Gallagher, Deltona. I've been a resident since 1987, I believe. So I do want to thank you for this. This is what we've been looking for. Page 11, list of projects. I've not seen this, and, and I know it's ranked by dollars through fiscal year 2029. So I only would like to maybe perhaps have it expounded upon or ranked a little differently, maybe rank it again as far as severity. Maybe on your dashboard, which is a wonderful idea, include possibly a small recap or a description of what those projects include, whether it's retention or, or, or pipes or drainage or pumps, and the, the number of miles, the number of houses, maybe some of that is really helpful. But this data is wonderful, and I just want to let you know that.
Albert Bryan.
Three things here. Let's look, go back a little history here. 2019, you said, was the last raise in prices for this. Let's see here. 2020, they asked for another increase. It was turned down by y'all. Oh, 2021, we asked for an increase. It was turned down by y'all. 2022, same thing. You know, it's a reoccurring theme. 2021, there was a nice spreadsheet that was done, and the increase that he was asking for was $190, from 128 to 190. He settled at 148, and y'all still didn't go for it. So if you want to take and put blame for this, let's put blame right there. Because for years, we have neglected our infrastructure. I'm going to tell you flat out, it's crumbling, right out from underneath your feet. I appreciate the fact that you thought up the scaling of it after what this guy gentleman said. I'm going to tell you to scale it from 170 to 180, 180 to 190. Because you know as well as I do and everybody else does, that it's only going to increase with time. I said the same thing four years ago, but it doesn't seem to sink in. It really doesn't. We stood here four years ago, five years ago, and said, "Scale it." Nothing happened. Last year, I said, "Split the difference." Nothing happened. Now, last year, when we actually went to vote for it, this whole place was full. I think y'all could expect that again this year when you go to vote actually on the assessment. Do something this year, though.
That closes public comments. Thank you, city managers. Do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, sir. I wanted to get a consensus. There's a, I know that has nothing to do with this tonight, but there's a request for a presentation for Deltona, for Deltona programs. Deltona Begin Again Children's Grief Council Center. Their programs are hospice, traumatic loss, and children's begin again. Just wanted to see if I can get a consensus to do that presentation in the next couple of commission meetings or so.
Commissioner Schimkus? Commissioner, uh, Vila Vasquez? Commissioner McCool? Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Please adjourn.